Good afternoon. This is a regular city commission meeting for the city of Largo. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that if you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent or off so that we don't have any interruptions. We're going to start this evening's meeting with an invocation given by Pastor Oliver King from Restoration Ministries of Largo. And then if you could please remain standing for the Fledges Allegiance led by Commissioner Smith tonight.
Good evening. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to say the prayer of the invocation tonight. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, our Creator, heaven and earth, our strength, our present help in the time of trouble. God, we take this moment just to say thank you for your many blessings and how you've provided to each and every one of us each day. Thank you, Father, for blessing our city, our community, our families. And thank you for blessing our government. Thank you, God, for the head of protection that you've provided to all of us, to many families that live in the city of Largo. In this commissioner's chamber, we ask for instructions and understanding in this meeting tonight. Help us to hear and to understand and to learn from one another and celebrate each other. We ask for your continued blessings over our government, our schools, our officials, our families, and everyone that make up this city of Largo. We ask for continued prayer for our homeless people, and we ask now that you bless them that are in need. Bless and continue to heal the many families impacted by illness and financial strain. Lastly, God, again, we ask that you bless our country, our leaders, our president. We be careful to thank you for everything that you've done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We have three ceremonial items on the agenda tonight. First is recognition of Largo Fire Rescue Explication Team.
Good evening, mayors, commissioners, and city leadership. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of Largo Fire Rescue to recognize the extraordinary group of men and women who have proudly represented our department, our community, and our city values on a global stage. The Largo Explication Team. This year, our team traveled to World Rescue Organization's World Rescue Challenge in Croatia. There are 37 teams representing 19 countries competing for the title of the world's best. These were the most elite rescue units from across the globe, teams with decades of competitive history, extensive international support. Despite the level of competition, Largo achieved a tremendous milestone, earning third place in two separate event categories. This accomplishment firmly places the city of Largo among the top vehicle rescuers in the world. What is truly defines this team is not what they won, but who they are, how they train, and what they represent. The Largo Explication Team is made up of 10 highly dedicated members, each bringing unique strengths and contribute to one unstoppable unit. Division Chief Emmett Sands, Lieutenant Ben Guibo, Lieutenant William Stark, that's me, Kyle Parker, John Steima, Nick LeBlanc, Alejandro Rivas, Dane Mata, Christina Lamb, and Evan Sebel. Together, they embody Largo City of Largo's core values: integrity, collaboration, passion, and excellence. And they have now carried those values onto the world stage. They demonstrate integrity through professionalism, sportsmanship, and a commitment to do the right thing under pressure. They live collaboration, work seamlessly as a unified team, 10 individuals with one purpose, one mindset, and one mission. They display passion, dedicating countless personal hours to refining their craft, long nights, early mornings, and endless reps, not for recognition, but for readiness. And ultimately, they've achieved excellence, proving that a single city, our city, can stand shoulder-to-shoulder among the very best in the world. When this team steps in the competition floor bearing the name Largo, they carry every resident, every firefighter, every city employee, and every leader in this room with them. Their performance showed in the world that we may not be the biggest city, but we are among the most capable, innovative, and committed. Just importantly, we experience the knowledge they gain, just, sorry, excuse me, just as importantly, the experience and knowledge they gain are brought right back home. Their world-class training directly enhances our ability to save lives here in Largo. The citizens we serve are safer today because the team constantly pushes itself to learn, grow, and lead. Tonight, we want to express our gratitude, thanking these 10 members of the team for their dedication, their professionalism, and their excellence they bring to our city and our department. We have elevated our reputation of Largo Fire Rescue and showcased the best of who we are, not just locally, not just nationally, but across the world. And to the commission, thank you for your continued support of our people, our program, and our mission. Achievements like this do not happen with your leadership and your investment in public safety. We are proud of this team, we are proud of our department, and we are proud to serve the city of Largo.
There's a rumor, there's a video you guys made.
There's a few videos, yes, sir.
I'd like to see them.
Told the vice mayor you guys would cut him out of car today, but congratulations again.
I volunteered, Mike.
Next, we will have a proclamation for the National Friends of Libraries Week.
Whereas this year, National Friends of Libraries Week celebrates 20 years of highlighting valuable contributions of Friends Group and other library support organizations that raise funds, promote library services, and advocate for libraries in their community. And whereas the success and vitality of libraries are greatly enhanced by the support and advocacy of their Friends Group, which is composed of dedicated volunteers who work tirelessly to support library programs, raise funds, and advocate the library needs. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded and sustainable libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to electronic materials along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights in ongoing places the fact that our library is a cornerstone of the community, providing opportunity for all to engage in the joy of life long learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas Friends of Libraries Groups play a crucial role in fostering community engagement, promoting literacy, and enhancing the overall quality of library services through their efforts and contributions. And whereas National Friends of Libraries Week is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the valuable contributions of these dedicated volunteers and with knowledge of impact of the libraries and communities they serve. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the city of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the city commission, hereby proclaim October 19th through 20th, 2025, as Friends of the Library Week in the city of Largo and urge all residents of the area to join and support the Friends of the Largo Public Library for all they do to enrich our library and enhance our community.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Tonight, Largo Public Library is proud to recognize and thank our wonderful Friends of Largo library. Libraries are more than repositories of books. They are vibrant hubs of learning, creativity, and connection. And behind this essential mission stands a dedicated group of volunteers, the Friends of the Library. The Friends make a big difference in what our library provides to the community through book sales, community donations, and volunteer-run bookstore. The Friends fund many of the programs and events enjoyed by all ages throughout the year. Moreover, the work of the Friends goes beyond mere funding. They advocate for the library's needs, working tirelessly to ensure it remains a vital part of our community. They help bridge the gap between the library's potential and its actual reach, ensuring that the library's impact is as profound and far-reaching as possible. What makes the Friends of Largo Public Library truly special is their passion and commitment to fostering a love of reading and learning within our community. They understand that libraries are not just about borrowing books. They are about opening doors to new worlds, new ideas, and new possibilities. They provide essential support for programs that inspire young readers, support lifelong learning, and bring people together. Today, I encourage each of you to join me expressing our deepest gratitude and support for the Friends of Largo Library Group. Their dedication is a testament to what can be achieved when passionate individuals come together for a common cause. Their efforts ensure that our library continues to be a place of discovery and inspiration for all. If you'd like to learn more about the Friends or find out how to get involved, stop by the Catherine E. Porter Bookstore or visit the library's website. In closing, let us celebrate the Friends not just for what they do, but for what they represent, a commitment to education, community, and the boundless potential of every individual who walks through the doors of our building. Thank you for your support, and thank you to the Friends of Largo Library. Friends of Largo Library representatives and board members here tonight are Ben Wiley, Pat Bell, Patrick Bell, Sandy Hoover, William Puckett, Kay Pfefferman, Jan Hendrick, Jane Gallagher, and Sarah Hoffman.
And last, we have a proclamation declaring October 20th through 26th, 2025, as Florida City Government Week.
Whereas city government is the government closest to most residents and often felt to have the most direct daily impact upon the community. And whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home. And whereas city government officials and city team members share the responsibility to facilitate and understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for city representatives to spread the word to all residents so that they can shape and influence this branch of government. And whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member cities, including the city of Largo, have joined together to engage with residents and provide education about municipal government through a variety of activities. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the city of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim the week of October 20th through the 26th, 2025, as Florida City Government Week in the city of Largo, in conjunction with the celebration of City Government Week in cities across the state of Florida, and to complement the city of Largo's current civic engagement efforts such as resident advisory boards, community ambassador programs, youth leadership council, cross-sector partnerships, legislative advocacy, and public meetings.
Good evening, city commission and Largo community. Happy Florida City Government Week. Largo's mission to provide superior services that inspire community pride comes to life every day through the work of team members and the engagement of our residents, businesses, and community members. Civic engagement is at the heart of everything that we do. And City Government Week is the perfect time to remind everyone of the many ways that they can stay informed and get involved. First, staying informed. Everyone can sign up to be part of the weekly Largo Today e-newsletter at largo.com/largotoday. It's the best way to stay updated on city projects, upcoming events, public meetings, and community grant opportunities. Number two, connect on social media. Social media users get real-time updates across the organization, everything from general city updates to library, recreation, public safety messages. Visit largo.com/social to explore all of our pages on Facebook, Instagram, and more. Number three, get involved. Visit largo.com/Connect to learn about volunteer opportunities, advisory board openings, and how to invite city team members to your next civic group or neighborhood meeting. Community members can also join Mayor Brown's upcoming coffee chats. This unique opportunity connects directly in a casual setting, and you can share what matters most to you every third Tuesday at 8:30. This fall also brings several ways for our community to engage with the city. Over the past 18 months, the city has updated and adopted our Vision 2030, our new strategic plan, which will guide Largo's priorities for the next several years. Community members are invited to complete a quick 10-minute online prioritization activity and share their input on where Largo should focus first. The prioritization tool is now open through October 31st and available at largo.com/strategicplan. Finally, the Great American Teaching is currently, is scheduled to happen in the next few weeks, and city team members and community members are invited to have the opportunity to visit a local school this November and inspire the next generation of public servants and community leaders. If you're interested, just connect with your local school. The city's communication team will be sharing this information and more ways to connect on our city communication channels all week and all year long.[1026.82][1026.82](Applause)
City Hall selfie, that's kind of a city. First, I want to take a picture of all you guys. I feel like you're enjoying yourself.[1051.13][1051.13](Laughter)
Turn the other way, here you go.
Do we have to grin?
Well, thank you all. Before we move on to citizens' comment, I'd like to ask the commission to consider allowing Commissioners Johnson and Lauser participate, to participate virtually.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next, we have citizens' comment. If you'd like to speak about something on the agenda outside of the consent docket, please wait until that item comes up. Do we have any cards this evening?
Yes, tonight, we have four cards. First is Daniel John.
Tell me when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor, and commissioners, et cetera. First thing I want to say is I think on the agenda tonight is hybrid vehicles. I think hybrid vehicles are a good idea. Electric vehicles, not so much yet, so I just wanted to get that out there. Shout out to our fire exorcation team and Friends of Library, and to the pastor. Great job, sir. Okay, this will be short and sweet. I just want to recognize four of your city employees. First one I want to recognize is Largo Emergency Operations Operator #5843, Operator Beiza, B-E-I-Z-S-A. I just want to say to her, great job. She was a calming voice and an understanding voice in a tense situation. She did wonderful. To Officer #0584, C.D. Toler, Mr. Toler, also Officer Toler. My wife liked you, and my dog liked you, so that's a grin all the way around, right there. To Officer in Training #0644, P.J. Sharon. I'm not going to tell you the question he asked, but great question. And last, but of course not least, Officer #0629, A.G. Castro. Birthplace Puerto Rico, not Cuba. He likes to point that out because he said he gets asked that a lot, and I asked that. So to all of them, I'm not going to get into any details, but they did a great job, and I appreciate their professionalism.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Eric Girard.
Mayor, commissioners, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, staff, my name's Eric Girard. I'm a Largo resident, and I was the co-organizer of the No Kings Rally that took place this past Saturday outside of Largo Central Park. More than 2,500 people peaceably assembled to protest the actions of the current administration in Washington, D.C. On behalf of all the people who planned and participated in No Kings, I want to thank Lieutenant Mike Blickendorf and all the Largo police officers who worked with our team to ensure that the event came off without any disruptions of any kind. The Largo Police Department and all of its officers and staff make up, in my opinion, the most professional and community-minded police agency in Tampa Bay, perhaps even the state. Lieutenant Blickendorf and the attending officers were visibly present, attentive, and courteous to everyone, as they said universally, they were not there to take sides. Their job was to make sure that everyone stayed safe. And for that, I want to say from my heart, thank you very much. Every Largo resident can be proud that LPD is our police department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ian Wilson.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, commissioners. First of all, I want to apologize for the way I'm dressed. I came straight from work. I've been on the road since 5 o'clock this morning. Shot here, got here about 14 minutes ago. The reason why I didn't go home and get changed and blah, blah, blah is because I'm so busy. And I'm a contractor, I'm a general contractor. It's been tough in this city for many years. It's been tough to work here, but what's becoming more increasingly tough by the visit is visiting the permit department, the planning department. I actually feel sorry for the people that work there, and I think that maybe we should put some more funds to what they need, because they appear to have a portal system that is very difficult to navigate on this side of the road. They deal with it every day, we don't. I'm not going to dwell on that fact and say, listen, I have a hard time with the computer. I deal with about 14 cities. Three of them are fantastic. Eight of them are difficult. One of them is miserable, and that's this one. I feel as though I had to put it out there in public and address it to you guys because I've made the comments to the upper level in that department, and it's fallen on deaf ears. And it's easy to put a negative tone on somebody who's just moaning about one of the city operations. So let's get to a positive aspect. Perhaps they need more money putting into the portal system to address the problems that they know they have. I just had to renew my business license. I was told I could do it online. I'm pretty good with computers. Like I said, I deal with 14 different cities. I could not renew my license online. I had to come here, leave again, come back again, leave again, come back again. I'm wasting six to seven hours on something that used to walk in and say, can I renew my business license? They say, what's your name and address? And I go, yes, my name is Ian Wilson, I live at 12418 Chickasaw Trail. Ah, J.R. Wilson &amp; Co., yeah. Yes, just sign here, we want to check for 150 and sign here. Done, love it. We've replaced that with a system that wasted seven hours of my time. The girl couldn't do it when she got to, and she didn't know why, but all of a sudden there was an answer somewhere that somebody else found somewhere else. It's almost in navigable on my side of the fence. I know I only have 29 seconds left, so I want to say that I don't generally enjoy being a negative person. I want to be a positive about this. I want to commend this mayor, Brown, on being Citizen of the Year, was it? Fantastic. The rest of the commissioners, you do a hell of a job. But let's pay attention to the details in our city, and this is one detail that we perhaps should pay more attention to and support staff for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Greg Gardner.
Oh. In 2018, the property east of my residence became a safe haven drug house, 2710 Adrian. The key dealers were Tyrone Scott Butler and Nicole Priscilla Gibson. Shortly after, 2720 became occupied with Nicole's brothers, more career drug dealers. Then the house across the street, 2785, became a full-time drug house with Terrence Terrell Smith, another career drug dealer. All in total, eight drug dealers, and it became hell. A quiet, peaceful Adrian Avenue became a hellhole within just six short weeks. The neighbors lived in fear. I kept a loaded 9mm at all times. My neighbors kept a loaded shotgun nearby at all times. All complaints to Largo PD fell on deaf ears. Largo PD told us to shut up, mind your own business, or move. I was threatened with arrest. After having to listen to a five-year-old named Sergeant Sean Chaney with Largo's pop team explain his investigation proved Nicole Gibson had a licensed catering business, and there was nothing else Largo PD could do. Interesting, and I appreciate him for that. I summoned the sheriffs to clean up, and they did. There, I met real men and women who didn't compromise their oath. No hesitation, no games, just action and dedication to serve the public. The sheriff's raid netted 32 middle-level drug dealers in my neighborhood. Every drug dealer was working with Largo Police Protection to sow death and community destruction. This was the largest drug raid on middle-level drug dealers in Largo's history. I then summoned a federal special agent to revoke Gibson's fraudulent Section 8 voucher. Gibson was then evicted, again evicted one year later, and most recently, evicted again. This is actually fun when you do this. Terrence Smith ran away. He was the one in 2785 Adrian. But that house became just another case of homicide from the fallout. My debt and loyalty will always be to my sheriff's deputies. Our community relationship continues to grow to this very day. Mr. Faustini, this explains why you have a massive cop turnover. The ethical cops leave once the honeymoon wears off. Largo became a sanctuary city 18 years ago thanks to Pat Gerard, John Carroll, Henry Schubert, and Alan Zimmatt. Alan Zimmatt is the ringleader. Mr. Zimmatt, you will, your fate will be the same as John Stephen Eckers, identical. Inspector General is waiting for your call, and it's serious. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards.
Thank you. Next, I'll ask for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next is consideration of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 7th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item 6, appointment of James Robinson as a member of the Community Development Advisory Board. Item 7, appointment of Mr. Jose Valdez as a member of the Largo Municipal Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement Plan Board of Trustees. Item 8, acceptance of a sidewalk easement on the East Bay Storage Facility property located at 110 Highland Avenue Southeast. Item 9, approval of an interlocal agreement for storm debris management site, Lot 14, utilization between the city of Largo and Bel Air Bluffs. Item 10, authorization to purchase fleet vehicle replacement parts for the Department of Public Works Fleet Management Division from O'Reilly Auto Enterprises LLC in accordance with the Sourcewell contract 19... in accordance with the Sourcewell Contract 100124-ORA in the estimated amount of $400,000 annually. Item 11, Resolution Number 2447, Ratifying an Application through the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program in an Amount Up to $155,000. Item 12, Authorization for City Manager John Kerf to Sign the Agreement for Petroleum Cleanup Participation Program and Contractor Selection Forum for Two Discharges at the Former Pinellas County Sheriff Jail Annex. Item 13, Authorization to Purchase Ammunition From Florida Bullet Incorporated for Use in Police Department Weapons in the Estimated Amount of $76,700. Item 14, Authorization to Purchase New Fire Rescue Vehicles from Allen J. Fleet Sales, 10-8 Fire Equipment Incorporated, and Predator Eagle Trailers in accordance with Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contracts 113021-OKC, 2026 091521-NAF, and 032824-NAF, and the Florida Sheriff's Association Contract Number FSA 23 VEF 17 in the Estimated Amount of $2,532,400. Item 15, Award of Contracts for Request for Proposal Number 25-P-834 for Emergency Debris Management Services to 13 Vendors. Item 16, Authorization to Purchase Cellular Voice and Data Wireless Services from Verizon Wireless for Fiscal Year 2026 in the Estimated Amount of $492,000. Item 17, Authorization to Purchase Cable TV and Internet Services from Spectrum Incorporated in the Estimated Amount of $160,000 for Fiscal Year 2026. Item 18, Authorization to Purchase Managed Print Services from Total Prints Dex Imaging in accordance with Contract 4410000-NASPO-24-ACS in the Estimated Amount of $196,800. Item 19, Authorization to Purchase Centronet Telephone Voice Services for Fiscal Year 2026 from the State of Florida Department of Management Services in the Estimated Amount of $70,300 for the Period of October 1, 2025, through September 30, 2026. Item 20, Authorization to Purchase Replacement Firefighter Protective Clothing from 10-8 Fire Equipment Incorporated in accordance with Lake County Contract Number 22-730K in the Amount of $139,800. Item 21, Authorization to Purchase 17 Enhanced Radios and Attachment Cables from Motorola Solutions in the Estimated Amount of $101,154 in accordance with Contract Number 19860-NASPO00318. Item 22, Authorization to Purchase Four Toyota Sienna Hybrid Vehicles, Two Toyota Camry Hybrid Vehicles, and Two Toyota RAV4 Hybrid Vehicles from Seminole Toyota in accordance with the FSA 25-VEL33.0 Contract for the Estimated Amount of $285,142. Item 23, Ratification of a Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Pinellas County Professional Firefighters, International Association of Firefighters Local 4966 for the remainder of a three-year term expiring September 30, 2027, adding single certification paramedics to the bargaining unit. Item 24, Ratification of a Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Pinellas County Professional Firefighters, International Association of Firefighters Local 4966 Supervisory for a three-year term expiring October 1, 2028.
Thank you. You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without commission of discussion including staff background provided in the commission packets.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. I'd like to point out, I think Mr. James Robinson is here. Thank you for serving on the Community Development Advisory Board, as well as Mr. Jose Valdez. I didn't see him. He's serving once again on the Municipal Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement Plan Board of Trustees. Thank you for your service to the city. Next up is item number 25.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The current collective bargaining agreement with the Communication Workers of America, CWA, expired on September 30 of 2025. The city and the CWA bargaining teams reached a tentative agreement on a proposed three-year contract beginning October 1 of 2025 and expiring on September 30 of 2028. Of the 128 bargaining unit employees who voted, the agreement was ratified by the membership with a vote of 98%, or 125 of yes. The notable changes to the proposed contract include wages for fiscal year '26 at an increase of 7% and an increase of 3% in wages in fiscal year '27 and '28, clarification on timeline for reimbursements as being a calendar year cycle, for example, boots, and clarification that personal option time should be requested as scheduled leave. Of note, the emergency communication dispatchers will remain status quo until a determination is made by the Public Employee Relations Commission on their representation status as they have petitioned to move from CWA to the PBA. There was also language cleanup and clarifications of current practice in the new contract. A market analysis was conducted by the compensation team on all CWA positions using specific benchmarks, which resulted in one position being added to the pay plan, nine position reclassifications, one delete add, five title changes, and an additional 1.0 FTE in variable position. We respectfully request the commission to ratify the CBA with the CWA for a three-year term. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have one card, Don Smolowitz.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brown, Commission, Staff, City Manager Kerf, and the rest of the staff. My name is Don Smolowitz, and I am the Communications Workers of America Local 3179 President, Vice President of the Largo Unit. I stand before you this evening to thank you for hearing, seeing, and acting in the best interest of your CWA team members of the city of Largo. Negotiating a successor agreement is always somewhat challenging, especially during these difficult times and restrictions. But with our teams, it went rather smoothly. We would like to thank the City of Largo team, Kathy McMath, the HR Office Administrator for the Minutes and Updates, Donna Gentick, HR Compensation Supervisor, for her tireless work and hours of time spent on the wage study and her great presentation. Elise Long, HR Director, who is the Labor Relations Officer, who reviewed, had an open mind, kept things moving, and agreed to the final changes and updates. And of course, Kimberly Nichols, Assistant HR Director. Kim was a true asset during negotiations. As a presenter, she was always prepared, always willing to hear all sides, and always looking out for both sides to benefit the city of Largo, its CWA team members, and the residents of the city. Kim and her dedication will very much be missed in this city. As the CWA, we look forward to continued positive working relationship with city administration, the Labor Relations Officer, and the Human Resources Department. Working together is the only way to provide superior services and dedication to our CWA team members and the community. I would also like to take a moment to thank the CWA Staff Representative, Paul Bouchard, for his tireless work and review of all of the articles of this collective bargaining agreement and for working in the best interest of all. I'd like to thank Dan Cubes, a CWA Team Member and CWA Executive Board Officer, ever-present and providing all the information necessary. And of course, our CWA Attorney, Robert Weaver. Without all of us, there would have not been an agreement. The dedication and many hours of work together got the agreement done. We're grateful to the CWA team members that ratified this three-year, and we are grateful for this commission and city staff approving the three-year agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Smith?
One, I always like to ask the question, Don, maybe it's for you, but what things did you learn through this one that staff and yourselves and CWA kind of improved on and took away from it? I'm always intrigued by ways we can always improve.
Absolutely. The city team, the leadership, did a wonderful job of communicating, of thinking outside the box. They were relatively new to the process with collective bargaining on the CWA side, and this was the first time that CWA dealt with having the CWA staff rep from our district office there during the negotiation process. It went smoothly. Everybody was willing to give a little, take a little. And again, like I said before, we were grateful for the opportunity and experience, and we're looking forward for three positive years and all future years. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And that's what I like to hear, is, you know, unions give a little, get a little. I think that's a great thing, and I applaud you all, your staff and CWA, for moving this forward. The one addition that I just want to make sure, that's the ground maintenance worker. That's for Highland, or for High Point?
High Point, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with the Communication Workers of America Local 3179, CWA, for a three-year term beginning October 1, 2025.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zimmett, anything this evening?
I do not have anything tonight.
All right. Commissioner Lauser?
Letting me join virtually up here in DC for work.
Give him a second. He just turned your volume up, so we can hear you now.
Thank you again for letting me join virtually this week. I'm trying not to make it a habit, but work has gotten me up in DC this week. So thanks again, and I don't have anything else.
Thank you. We're going to go, Commissioner Johnson.
Echoing Commissioner Lauser, thank you for letting me attend virtually. I was feeling a little under the weather today, so I decided not to be around everybody else, but I appreciate it. I am sorry I missed the Largo Extraction Team being honored today, and congratulations to them, and thank you for your commitment to excellence. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate you not sharing and hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hulk?
Just to reiterate, thank you to our CWA workers and all that you guys do for the city. It doesn't go unnoticed, doesn't always make the headlines, but we know you're there, and we appreciate all of you. Also, the Friends of Library, not enough words to express the gratitude and hard work that they put into giving us one of the top libraries in the state of Florida. And congratulations to our Largo Extracation Team, 10th in the world, but number one in our hearts. Congratulations, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Everything Commissioner Hulk said, the Extraction Team, and the city government, our staff do a wonderful job, and I thank them. I may question things here and there, but it's good intent. I like to do that. I'm sometimes someone who likes to dig in the weeds on things, so. I thank them for everything they do, and the Extraction Team, fantastic. That's wonderful. Our Friends of Library, man, working in a library and seeing what our friends do compared to other libraries is fantastic. They do an outstanding job, and they do it volunteering. And people don't realize kind of what was said. The library is a gateway to so many things to improve life, and our friends are there to help everybody through. So I thank them, and I thank the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Holmes.
John, would you look into that problem? The contractor was up here before. I have been hearing more and more people coming around, talking about the same problem, getting the permits done, getting the license renewals done. He wasn't the first one. This is the one I heard that was the most egregious one, if what he said is accurate. Would you please look into that?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we'd have to look into it.
Okay. Second thing, next week is Halloween. Mom and Dad encourage your kiddies not to eat the stuff while they're out there trick-or-treating. When they bring it home, I would give it a careful, very careful review. Make sure none of the unusual people are sticking things in the candy that shouldn't be there. It's just pathetic that every Halloween you get this stuff. They're sticking needles or razor blades or drugs or whatever it may be. You need to give the candy the once-over, really my suggestion. Thank you very much. Enjoy your Halloween.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBreezy?
Thank you. I was also going to mention what Commissioner Holmes, Vice Mayor Holmes, said about regarding the software. You know, I'm a big fan of the Planning and Building Department. Haven't worked with them for so many years, but, you know, I have heard similar feedback. So I know they're working very hard to get that software up to speed. We've talked about it in a previous session, and hopefully those efforts continue to get it working optimally. And thank you, Mayor, for that small change in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's, you know, we're all patriots, and, you know, it's an honor to say the Pledge of Allegiance before each meeting, and, you know, choosing a commission to lead it is, you know, again, an honor. So thank you for making that change.
Absolutely. Thank you for the suggestion. I just wanted to, once again, thank the CWA and the admin team, and well, thank the CWA for everything they do for the city and for everybody that was involved in coming to a nice agreement. The Friends of the Library, I don't know if you guys have been to their Short Story Awards, but put it on your schedule. It's amazing listening to the short stories, and it's all done by the Friends. And the Extracation Team, I got to watch when they were over, I can't remember where they were. Portugal? They were over in Europe somewhere.
Croatia.
Croatia. Yeah. And one thing I noticed was the cars were way smaller. So they had to, like, work in little tiny cars. So that was interesting, but they do a great job. They represent us very well, and as was pointed out earlier, more importantly, I think, they come back here and teach their colleagues in the department the state-of-the-art ways to get people out of cars. They're saving lives here on Alberton Road and on East Bay and around our city regularly. I've heard stories of people that were so happy that somebody from the Extracation Team was there because they had to get somebody out to the hospital quickly. And those are stories that are because that whole team spends a lot of time to hone their craft and then shares it with the rest of the people on the fire department. So lastly, I wanted to say, I'm not going to tell you to ignore Vice Mayor Holmes, but there's a trick-or-treat trail that's probably save candy right here at City Hall this Friday, so please come out.
What time?
I think it's 6 o'clock.
Which five?
5:30. Starts at 5:30.
I'll come dressed as the Vice Mayor.
And that'd be awesome. And that's all I had. Mr. Kerf?
Sure. I want to thank you, Mayor. I want to add on to the compliments to the Extracation Team, that part of our competition, our support of them competing both across the state and the country and internationally, is it creates a culture of excellence in the department that carries through all the work that they do. So it's more than just sending a group of highly disciplined and experienced team members, you know, on a trip. It's about creating a culture in the fire department that we're very proud of. Do want to add an update on the contract with Bel Air Bluffs and Bel Air in the county. A lot of hard work been done by all four governments over the last month. We have a contract that is ready. Unfortunately, it's not on our agenda tonight because we were still dotting i's and crossing t's as late as yesterday and today. So we felt it appropriate for the community to have an opportunity to see the contract in our normal course of business and posting it in the agenda for our next meeting. But I am very grateful for this commission's support, and I think your diligence and attention to the topic, I think, brought our partners in fire protection together to get this done. So thank you. And to the other communities as well, their governments worked hard to be sure we got through all the issues that we had to get the contract to completion. We will be fully reimbursed for the cost of providing service out of that station, and the station agreement will continue to be in place until, in depth, for as long as that agreement was intended. So again, thank you to everyone. Want to add a couple other events. Halloween at McGow Park is on Friday at 5:30 as well. So I guess you can run through the course here and then maybe head out to McGow.
God, I gotta write these down.
And then Largo Evening Market is Saturday at 5:00 downtown. So I encourage everyone to visit that.
They're going to have free candy, too?
I was going to mention also with, and I agree, there's been a big learning curve, and we're still trying to smooth that learning curve with the new software and permitting and community development, and there's some improvements to be done there. Importantly, I think, we have a group, an outside group, that's taken a look at customer service and community development across the board to include permitting. None of the changes have yet even been suggested, I don't think. Maybe a couple in the process, some low-hanging fruit that they've made some suggestions for. But I expect that what comes out of that is going to really help with a lot of the challenges. And I've heard, heck, myself, it took a little while. It took like three tries on that new software to get my business license through. I didn't have to come in, but it was certainly clunky, especially the first year of starting out, putting everything in when you've been for 20 years, just setting a check-in. So it's been a learning curve, and I... So it's been a learning curve, and I think that our motto around here is providing superior service, and we expect to do that in every department. So we understand, and we appreciate the input, and we'll continue to work on that. Any action items this evening?
The only one I had was from Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Holmes, that the City Manager looked into the issues raised by Mr. Wilson regarding problems with the permitting system.
That's great. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Happy City Week.